Ready.
Let me see the agenda.
We got the blue screen, they're here in trouble, Mark.
Actually, it's a good thing, because you got it first. So I'm gonna go over here and get booted up. Come on up to the table.
All right, welcome back, everyone. Up on our list first is Superior Court.
Is on-call employees can say no. And so, for example, our detention manager pulled a sixteen-hour shift over the weekend, including graveyard Saturday morning, so we have a grumpy detention manager at the moment. And it, you know, it's expensive, it's not a great way to treat your employees. And she's now overtime-eligible, so costly. So, we asked for two permanent part-time positions. The commission created those, we asked for those without benefits. It turns out that the union contract requires us to pay benefits to those positions. So, we have three choices, as we see it. Continue to do what we're doing and continue to have a grumpy detention manager.
Isn't she going on vacation?
Yeah, I'm leaving tomorrow. They're gonna call you.
Sweet.
Or, our first choice would be to provide benefits to those two permanent part-time positions, because that's, we think, the best way to solve the problem we're in. But that's a forty thousand dollar bill. Ongoing, an ongoing cost, not just one time. The third choice would be to take those, or third option would be to take those two permanent part-time positions, convert it into one position with benefits, which will solve most of our scheduling issues, but not all. Given where we are with the budget in the county, and even without commissioner and other one here, you know, I can't, in good conscience, sit here and say, "We need forty thousand dollars a year more, forevermore." So, our recommendation is that we get the board's permission to convert those two positions into one position, and move ahead with filling it.
And so, by doing that, there's a savings.
A savings.
Almost eight thousand.
It saves eight thousand dollars. We would like to keep that money, just because it means we're gonna need more extra help, because it doesn't solve all our problems, but...
Are you fully staffed yet?
Um, not yet. I have one full-time position open.
Do any of the people that you currently interviewed for your part-time positions, would they qualify as a full-time?
Yes.
We'd probably have to restart that whole process, because it would be applying for a different job.
Different job, okay.
Job, but we can do it quickly, I hope.
We have Mary on the line here, so... Mary, did you have anything to add to that?
Oh, I just wanted to mention the verbiage of the permanent part-time versus extra help. I think in the past, they've been kind of interchangeable, and so, the contract is very specific around part-time is different than extra help. That's one of the contracts that's super, super clear. And so, that's where we're kind of in the pickle that we're in right now. It's just, I just want to make sure everybody understood that there was a, nothing not asked for in the budget that should have been, there was just a language issue, so... And I would definitely support the administrator's ask for a full-time.
You're adding on two part-times for one full-time.
With benefits, of course, because...
So, we're gonna give benefits, you have to one or two.
Yep.
So... That's by contract, so...
I'm good with that.
Good.
Just moving it forward.
What's the downside to, so the two bodies that are here part-time? One, what's, how much are you gonna end up having to? Are you, is it gonna be cut to twelve-hour shifts instead of sixteen-hours shifts?
It all depends, honestly. Some weeks, I don't have to work at all extra, other weeks, I could be pulling sixteens, eighteens. Yeah, it just all depends on staffing, sick time, and whatever it might be. So, we, our facility, we have the lowest staffing numbers in the state. We run the two full-time on at all times. Most facilities are three to four, up to seven to Thurston County. So, we have to have two people in the building at all times. So, if somebody calls out, and I can't get anybody to come in, I'm dropping what I'm doing to come in.
And I hear you have an influx right now of two vehicles.
Yeah, we did. We were running pretty steady with seven to eight kids for about six, seven months. We're now back down to two, which everybody's kind of enjoying that for a breath. Yeah, it is a breath, definitely. But I foresee at some point, those numbers will then climb.
Yeah, the trend statewide is, numbers are coming up, and that's not unique here. That's what everybody's seeing. And we're talking to facilities about converting a room back into a dormitory. So, we'd have a male dormitory to female dormitory. If we get, if the population keeps going up, there are five individual holding cells, and then, anything over that has to be in a dormitory.
Have you ever thought about, like, we are sending some of our folks from the jail to Miss Gwali. Have you ever thought about maybe doing something like that, like, maybe with Thurston, or... Is that a, is that a hard task?
It is the court's position that kids should be here in the county. And, you know, we are not budgeted for contracting out kids that would, we'd have to come back for money for that, they're not gonna take our kids for free. And, you know, it's the court's position that, very strongly, that, to the extent that they have family, intact family, that they should be able to visit with their family and be integrated in the community and not shipped off somewhere else.
I knew you were gonna say that.
Yeah, we've had this discussion.
We have.
You would still have to have staffing for transports, you know, for court and whatever it might be. The hardship it does create for families is significant for some families. Yeah. And getting another county to enter into a contract might be a little tough.
Thurston was ready to do it.
I don't know if their administration was ready.
The commissioners were very...
Yes. But the judicial side of it, I'm not so sure that they were...
Yeah, they even had a judge that was saying, "Yeah, that's it." Yeah. But we're not Thurston County. Are you comfortable moving it forward?
Yeah. So, that'll be on the eighteenth? We have a regular meeting?
Yeah.
Okay?
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
You gonna be back by the eighteenth?
I'll be here.
It depends, right?
Yeah, we fly in the seventeenth at night, so...
Oh, okay, so you'll be here even more than I expected.
Mine.
I'll try.
All right, Mark.
I don't know.
Oh, no.
Marissa.
Sorry, I should put my glasses on.
And the fun topic?
Yes. I guess. How are you? I'm pretty good, how are you?
Good.
Oh, yes, that one.
So, yes, we are bringing the short-term rental regulation topic back. We read this back on January sixth, and it was desired to give our new commissioner a little bit of time to get up to speed on some of the material before we came back. So, I am back, and hopefully can get some direction from you guys of what you want to do. Last time when I came, I mentioned that our PAC had very divided opinions about what to do. We had three that pretty much thought the regulations on the books already should pretty much take care of us, short-term rentals in the county. Then we had one that wanted stricter regulations, and one that was pretty much okay with the draft that staff had brought forward. But at the December meeting, they decided that with our comp plan in progress right now, and the fact that our comp plan has a lot of new stuff, new legislation around housing, and we have a new climate element, and a lot of work, and a lot of, a lot of information to process for them, so their decision, their recommendation was to stall the short-term rental regulation review until they had gotten a complete draft of the comp plan, plus thirty days, they added that in. But, so, from staff, I mean, if we, if you do want to go forward with short-term regulations, that would be staff's recommendation, too, is to wait until we have the comp plan draft pretty much in hand, just because of how time-intensive it is right now. But, of course, the other issue was wanting to know, since we have new, a new commissioner, if it's even desired, desired to go forward with short-term rental regulation review at this time, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I've tried to read over everything that has provided, and, you know, I gotta say, I'm still kind of in the mixed emotion kind of things, like, we're not enforcing some of the ordinances and codes we've got now, how does pilot more on going to solve this problem? So, I kind of tend to lean that way, as I read through it. So, I don't know, it's, it's kind of a non-committal answer, because I'm not really sure. I'd rather, you know, sit down and go into more detail with somebody that's going to explain how this is gonna work. And maybe that's you, or I'm not sure who, but why is this going to help out our short-term rental problems? Because I hear both sides of it. A lot of constituents who live along the canal, and they're not happy with what's happening in the short-term rental labors. And there's people whose livelihood depends on the short-term rentals, so...
I would recommend waiting until after we get a cop done, at the very least. And that will be in the end of this year, right?
We're supposed to have a final by the end of this year.
It was June.
It was June for a final, but they extended it to December, yep.
Marissa has her Taskmaster hat on, and is trying to get the PAC to move through that comprehensive plan. So, they do have kind of a timeline associated with goals for getting that done, or at least to a point where we can start publishing it and pushing it out there for responses. So, that would be before the end of the year, but I definitely agree with her that the focus right now has to be on that comp plan update, which is different than normal. It's like, once every ten years, we have to do a major update, and this is the major update here.
I think the hard part, too, is the SCJI, right? They are multitasking with a bunch of other counties as well, so it makes it even more difficult to get things done.
What is S.J.?
SCJI?
S.J.
I don't remember what it stands for.
SCJ Alliance. So, it's our consultant company that is working on drafting our chapters. So, yes, they are definitely stretched a little thin, so that's been a little bit of an issue, too. So, we do have a good project manager now, but it's like, you know, trying to catch up, so...
I understand that.
How would you lie to me about that? Yeah, so I guess, from two of us, postpone it.
Postpone.
Yeah, I probably like to schedule some time with you, or whoever needs to...
Kel and I can talk with you further.
Is that kind of a relief?
Well, I mean, it could have gone either way, but, I mean, I think we definitely do need to delay it because of the comp plan, just because we're actually doubling up on meetings for that, too, so it's... And there's a lot of people interested in both topics right now, more than usual, than I'm used to, so it's a lot going on, so...
We need, you need any of your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, Mark.
Now it does. So, first topic on my list to discuss with you guys is our formal designation of our associate development organization. So, this happens every couple of years. Department of Commerce kind of comes back to the county and says, "Hey, we just want to make sure that your, that your associate development organization, who is it?" And so, in the past, over the last several years, we've designated the Mason County Economic Development Council as our ADO. And so, this is just to bring it back in front of the commissioners, and determined moving forward, do we want to continue to use the Mason County Economic Development Council?
Oh, I absolutely do. I'd never question my mind.
Yes.
So, I will get that on the agenda.
For the seventeenth?
Eighteenth.
Okay. Whatever that Tuesday is.
So, I have the next item. So, I have approval of the 2025 oath of credit card inventory. And Toni is our credit card administrator, and she put this together, she did an awesome job, so I just wanted to give a shout-out to Toni for that. And she is just, or we're just asking for you to review it, and for Mark to be able to sign it. We have two hundred and seventy-three thousand outstanding in credit limit for, between all of our different funds in the county, and so, we thought it was important for it to be brought forward, and for you to take a look at it and be familiar with it.
Question?
No, I've looked it over, it looks good. It was, that was one of those things, where it says, "Well, sign this," saying you received a credit card, so I didn't get a credit card.
And you don't get one?
No, I don't, I don't want one.
Kind of a hot topic with this, or it has been in the past, and so I thought I'd bring it up, is the meals on credit cards is not allowed per the credit card policy. And I think there's some confusion, because in the travel policy, which is not the credit card policy, but in the travel policy within the personnel policy, it states that, you know, meals are allowed, and that you can pay up to fifteen percent with a tip, but that is not with the credit card. So, I just wanted to clarify that for everybody, that don't purchase your meals on the credit card.
Do not?
Yes.
Yeah. Because I think the finance committee, our audit committee, talked about per diem, switching over to per diem. I would like to bring that topic up when all three of us are here. So, maybe...
Yeah, I think there would be a lot of support for that, and it's a big, time-consuming.
Yeah, a time suck.
Yeah.
So, I'd like to know, you know, maybe, maybe that's one thing that we could discuss is the per diem, you know, what's going on, my gosh.
It's been a hot topic, so, yeah.
It has, but I think it should be discussed by, by more than what it's been discussed with.
So, my memory serves that it went before the finance committee.
Of the audit committee.
Was it the audit committee?
Yeah.
Audit, you're right, audit committee, thank you. And they looked at both sides of it, and then actually had an official vote on it, and decided to stay with the current, the current model in place, which is you provide receipts, and you're reimbursed for your actual charges, as opposed to just getting a per diem amount.
Oh, I'd like to know, what are the benefits, the pros and the cons? So, maybe that could be a topic that's brought to a work session or something?
Okay.
I'd like to have info on that. I've heard both sides.
That would be, I would definitely recommend that be...
Incredible receipts.
What's that?
I definitely would recommend that be with all three commissioners present. Randy was involved with the audit committee when that discussion occurred, so he might be able to provide his own insight to it, so...
That'd be nice.
Yeah.
It'd be a fun topic.
All right.
John, I think you have the next item.
Oh, my next?
ICS?
Well, first, commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to share with you this course. I apologize, I didn't get the sheet out to you in advance, but I didn't finish it until Sunday, so... And no, I'm not gonna cover everything on the sheet, but I think it's important to have, and the key points I will provide, because it's the rule, and I think that's important. But let me first start with the reason for this course, is it is a federally written course. The challenge with the federal government is it has the right person at the right place at the right time, and, excuse me for my age, but a blind check. That doesn't apply at this level. Nor do they have a responsibility as first responders. They're not. Probably the only sports analogy I use is, on a sports team, they're the C-team. You use them when you don't have anybody else left, or they happen to show up and they want to play. That's what the federal government does. The state's the B-team, and local governments are the C, are the A-team since eighteen oh four. So, there hasn't been a disaster since eighteen oh four that first responders have not responded to. The challenge is, do we have enough? And can they sustain themselves long enough to assist the victims of the disaster, which is a local government's responsibility? So, I'll be quick on an example. One of the most complex governments that exists today in disasters are counties, because in a normal day, they really don't have anything. They're not responsible for first responders, they have very little that they can give out. In a disaster, the highest elected official of the jurisdiction is responsible for everything, whether it's a special-purpose district or not. That gets slid traditionally. But I can tell you that in a disaster, this commission is responsible for fire districts, school districts, PUDs, water districts. They're responsible for anything that provides any type of protection to citizens, and whether they can or not. That's why this course is important, is to be able to sit down and understand, not how ICS works, by no means does anybody expect any leadership to be an incident commander, because that's discipline-specific, nor to be an area commander, which is government-specific. You folks need to understand how we recover. Where do we get our money from? The big question is, is once insurance is exhausted, whose money do you use next to recover from? Your own? I suggest not, because there's no end to that. When you start that, that means the state and federal government have no legal obligation to do anything. That's why we start at the federal level to ensure the rules are all in place. My job is to ensure that, not that you follow the rules, because you do it every day. We're audited every year, and we pass our audits. There's no difference between that audit and a FEMA audit, absolutely none. You have to follow the same rules. You can't commingles or plant duplicate or gouge. Well, that's an everyday requirement for our accounting systems. What we need to do is take the way we do business, and fold it into FEMA language, so when they look at it, they understand what it is. That's what I do. And it's simple to do that, but it starts with you folks in 402. Right now, based on our calculations, we have about a hundred and five senior officials in this county. That should take this course. Now, FEMA expects that you already have. The reality is, is we've only had twenty-three, counting the six we currently had enrolled, so we're still eighty-two short on a minimum number. And the reason this is important, because we talk about where disaster loans come in, how advanced contracting works, how we use emergency workers, which we used when Fire District Twelve failed, how do we connect to the federal government through the state? What the state's responsibility is, which is not to just say, "Well, you're a political subdivision of the state, so therefore..." No, in a disaster, the rules change. The disaster is, we manage the disaster, and it's the bottom line. Their job is to support us, the federal government's job is to support them. Whether an elected official declares a disaster or not, they are still responsible for doing so. If you haven't, that doesn't negate that responsibility, because the federal government believes that everybody's been through this training, you understand, well, your responsibilities and obligations are, you're going to exercise those, and if you choose not to, that's by choice, not because you don't know. I want to ensure that our commission understands that, so the decisions that are made, I can help implement those. My job is not to tell you what you can't do, my job is to tell you what you can do, because, again, there's very little in a disaster we can't do. What we can't do is violate the rules, and they're very clear, and they're pretty simple. So, that's what 402 is. So, what we're hoping is, is that we can get the interest out to fire districts, to PUDs, to those people who protect at-risk populations, so they can recover, because we've already had one fire district that failed. Two thousand twenty-four, there were only two fire districts in the nation that failed, and only one recovered. Twelve was the only fire district out of the two that recovered in the nation. The other district, the county, had to split that district's responsibility up and change the fire response lines, so that another district picked it up, and it was eight months before they actually got any tax revenue from taking on that additional responsibility. That's huge, when you're looking at fire districts who virtually every quarter are looking at that funding drop to ensure that they can run their operations. So, we want to make sure that the commission understands, that even if it's a school district, with everything that's happening now, not good or bad, it just is, that things are changing, and we need to be prepared for those on the side that more responsibility gets pushed down through government, because there may not be a funding support to go with that immediately, but the responsibility will still remain, if that makes sense. So, that's my job, to ensure we do that.
John, that, that training is actually currently on calendars?
It is, and we can send flyers out again.
Seventeenth?
Nineteenth.
It's Wednesday, the nineteenth, from eight o'clock in the morning until noon.
It is.
So, it's a four-hour, four-hour class on the nineteenth of February.
And is this similar to the agenda?
Yeah, I'm gonna get everything in there, which means there's all of us standing up and introducing who we are as a federal court. We don't do that. Before the course, if you'd like to get there early and meet everybody, that's great, but it takes so much time to do that, and the reality is, there's so much to cover, and I don't want to take up more of elected officials and senior officials' time. So, we're actually gonna be covering a lot in four hours.
And is there, is there a Zoom option, or is this in-person?
No, we're putting a Zoom option up.
Okay.
But I have to figure out how to issue certificates from Zoom, because 402, three hundred and, three hundred, four hundred, and three oh five haven't been authorized for Zoom yet, but we'll figure that out. There's no test.
And this is gonna be, this is gonna be held out at the Emergency Operations Center at Public Works? Okay?
I'm fine with being there.
Any, any questions from the commissioners on what's coming up, and the importance of it?
No, I think, I think Commissioner Nadev and I will still be on vacation, so you'll probably have to...
No worries. And I apply the laws, see, in your leisure, you can always have to read them if you'd like, and I do have them where I've underlined where there's specific passages.
Can you send this, are the, is this linked, or?
I can, yeah.
Links? Okay.
And what I can do is break them down, because my list covers everything, it's pretty exhaustive, so I'll make sure that I add the ones that are important to you folks, especially the four in an activation that we're required to follow, which is why it's so important to understand the difference between normal operations, state of emergency, and a disaster, understanding that a presidential disaster declaration is an administrative act. You can do that with up to forty-five days from the point that the incident occurs, it can be approved or disapproved, and it has to go through a formal process for adoption. And if it's disapproved, then it goes through an exception or an appeal, so it doesn't really have much to do with life safety, it has more to do with the administrative act of freeing up money for recovery, where a declared disaster is where the county exercises its responsibility to protect its citizens, based on the formal definition, which is when the jurisdiction goes beyond its capability to respond with what it owns. We don't own fire, we don't own really law, we don't really own EMS, so all those first responders that go out there and save lives are special-purpose districts, to include school districts, which primarily in the law says that children at risk are our primary responsibility, even though on a normal day, we really don't have... are our primary responsibility, even though on a normal day, we really don't have any authority to do anything with them. And I can tell you right now, based on the school districts and Mason County's, they're having challenges trying to understand what their authority is and how they deal with a disaster, because from their perspective, they don't have much. So they don't know how to activate the system. Because currently, there's only three people in Mason County that can, one, activate, and, two, who can order resources from the state. That's myself and my two colleagues in the office. That's it legally. That's all that exists. So it's making sure that everybody understands how we do it, so that we can get those resources in. Because without ordering them, we get the bill for them. And that's an important piece, especially when you order a helicopter or...
Yeah, and so you've sent this invitation out to the, all of our special purpose districts?
I did, and I'm going to send out the cover sheet, the one I just finished on Sunday.
Did you get, did you get any RSVPs? I mean, are we concerned about how many people that we...
I think we got two fire commissioners.
Oh, okay.
But we did talk to the Fire Commissioners Association and the fire chiefs, so...
You can send out a reminder.
Yeah.
We'll do that, we'll keep hammering them.
With the agenda, maybe?
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
We will still have courses regardless of the student number. Just because if I keep canceling, we'll never get it done, so...
Well, that's important. Thanks, John.
So that's all I have, thank you.
So Tnesa has the next two items.
Hello?
Morning.
Good morning.
So first of all, I would like to share the grants that have been submitted so far since I started in September. The first one was for the Mason Lake LMD to update their 21-year invasive aquatic vegetation management plan, or IA VMP. And that was submitted on December 12. And then most recently, on January 30th, we submitted the Clean Building Performance Grant, which is to get us in compliance with our Tier Two buildings, which is the courthouse jail in Building 10, by July 1st, 2027, for the clean building standards.
That's a good one, because we're required to do things, so at least finally they're giving us an opportunity and money.
Yeah. And then currently in progress, I'm working with the clerk's office on the Secretary of State Local Records Grant, which is due at the end of the month.
And that's digitizing?
Yeah, that's digitizing records. And the grant is, the maximum is $50,000, but this project is estimated to be $300,000 or more. It's very extensive as far as the need and the condition that the records are being kept in. So we'll definitely be looking for more funding.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, I hear it's moving along already. Yeah?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I hear it's moving along already. You're already digitizing.
We're trying, or attempting, or we're trying to alleviate some of the labor costs. And my staff doing not a lot of it. But unfortunately, we're going back 50 years, so it's a little bit more difficult. You know, so I don't have the adequate staff to be able to do that solo. So that's what we're up against.
Well, that's awesome. Yeah, I'm glad you're here.
Thank you. Some questions?
Nope.
Good job.
So just to add a little bit to it, the Aquatic Invasive Plants Management Grant is kind of a pass-through funds. So this is something that they came to us and said, hey, we really want to get some funds to help us out in updating our invasive aquatic vegetation management plan. So we've been, Tnesa's been working with them, and they've done a lot of the footwork associated with it. And Tnesa has pulled it together and put it into an application, so I'm excited about that. The Clean Building Performance Grant, this is something that, really, the first step is taking our large buildings and assessing the health of them. So we really have to put in place some tools and mechanisms to manage how much and what does that plan look like going forward. So obviously, we have buildings that are a little bit older. I give Kelly a hard time when I look over at Building 8 when it snows outside, because you can see where the roof trusses are in the building, which means that maybe some more insulation fell down or something, so we need to do some work there. Building 8's not big enough to be included in this project. But the other buildings definitely, the jail and Building 10 and the courthouse are. The jail has actually gone through some energy upgrades in the past. And so I'm kind of interested to see what that looks like. So by managing and monitoring the usage in those facilities, or those buildings, it'll be, it'll give us some good data.
Yeah, for sure.
We just wanted to make you aware too of the other grants that Tnesa's been scoping out. And I don't know if you want to speak about those at all.
Sure, so the sheriff's office was interested in getting some flock technology, which is where they have technology to read license plates.
Oh, yeah.
Also, there's a mental health field response grant that hopefully we can meet this week to discuss moving forward with that. And just in general, things I've been asked to look for funds for are around housing, recreation, and land. And of course, the funds for records, not just for the clerks, but a lot of other departments have that need.
Go from paper to a cloud. Do you ever figure out which cloud we're starting on all our stuff? That was a, no, never mind. No, this is great, yeah. And have you found that it's, other departments, are they receptive of you reaching out to say, you know, how can I help you?
Somewhat. I think it's just a matter of capacity. I think people want help, but don't always have that moment to take a break and focus on grant work.
Yeah, yeah. I think the more they see you, the more they're going to use you, so...
Hope so.
Yeah. You'll be so busy.
Yeah, I like to say...
Oh, you are busy, so...
Getting there.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
I will say this regarding Tnesa. We are, you know, we have a tremendous need. She has been nothing but excellent. She is, you know, she has walked upstairs with us. She has went to the old jail. She has looked at the different rooms where we have storage. You know, we went through the boxes. And we've explained to her that we're going to have to have a group of folks that's going to be able to review all the documents, make sure that they're full documents, because there are missing files in a lot of our case files up there. So that's something that, you know, we explained that. And I think she has been very optimistic as far as our needs. And she's been very good, very good for us, and, you know, kind of, you know, very supportive. And she sees how much work that we're trying to do to try to alleviate the amount of money extra that we're going to need for this project. So that being said, I'm very grateful. And yes, I like to monopolize her 100% of the time, but I don't think that's going to work out that way.
Right. Sorry to keep... Our TV was idle.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Tnesa.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Okay, administrator updates?
Everything that I've, everything I have, I've actually put in there, so I think that we're good to go. We do have a holiday coming up next Monday, so we will not have briefings next Monday. So that always kind of puts a wrinkle in our plan of getting things before the commission and a briefing, and then trying to get them on the agenda. So I think that we'll have an okay agenda for the 18th, but then the following agenda for the next month, I think that's always a challenge, right? Because it's every other week that we have these regular meetings to approve things. When we have to miss a Monday of briefings, sometimes that puts a little wrinkle, but we're good.
Do you know, do we have upcoming hearings?
None that I'm aware of. There is, isn't that called a work staff?
Yeah.
They might help, yeah, in the hallway. I think that there's one for road vacation coming up. I've got it on my calendar, so...
Okay.
It's a piece of property that we're selling that, we used to have it as part of our road easement. But then we did some work around there, and no longer need that parcel. And we have an interested purchaser, so...
Number 420?
I can't remember which one it was. There's a couple that are out there, not the one that's on the agenda today. Any other items that commissioners want us to?
I'll bring this up. I was at Orca Friday afternoon. We were having onboarding or orientation, I guess. And spoke with Grace Harbor Commissioner Gloria Miller. And she brought up the topic of going back to the combined jail. And it was my understanding that really it was Grace Harbor that shut that down. So...
It was, yeah.
She is wanting to bring it up again, so I'm, well, you guys shut it down. I mean, so it's the only outside topic that I have. We've got to do something, I mean...
I think it's San Juan, they're building one, and it's $72 million. Just for now. And we heard back a final report on our...
We got the final report on the jail study that actually talked about the need for not only increasing the capacity of our current jail to account for the mental health and SUD issues that exist within the jail, but it also identified a need for creating some type of crisis intervention facility. Kind of give individuals an opportunity to go into that before they do something that puts them in the jail. And then being able to kind of share those staff. So I will provide that to you, Pat. We just had that in August of 20, August or September of '24 was our most recent survey that was done. I am waiting on some information to provide to them, because they were going to give us a, they were going to do a quick analysis on what if we were to just farm everything out? So what would the cost look like versus, here's our operational cost, and then what would it look like if we just, if we worked with a surrounding jurisdiction to handle all of our prisoners?
Okay, haven't heard anything back on that one yet.
I'm still waiting, they're waiting for information from us, so... Yep.
Okay. Cool.
And then as far as the...
Something we want to bring up again with Grace Harbor and all. I mean, they have two new commissioners, so...
Might be different.
It might be, but I don't, I really don't know.
So there was quite a bit of work done, and I don't know the year in which it was done. It was before I came to the county. But there was quite a bit of work done on what it would look like to combine those things and share jail services. A lot of meetings, a lot of money spent. They, I have a report that I got from the consultant that did that. But the part of that report was Grace Harbor had kind of backed out of it. And so if Grace Harbor's interested in it, I would encourage them to start that process up. And we'd be happy to talk to them, but if they want to be the lead on it, that would be awesome.
Since we were the lead last time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I can reach out to her and let her know. Because that was my understanding, was like, okay, you guys killed that deal.
Yeah, very much. Yeah, yeah. Although it's sometimes good to have new blood and different desires. So we'll see if they want to.
Okay.
Do you want to reach out to the...
Sam.
Commissioner Mullen? I guess.
They have the county administrator there now.
Yeah.
Sam Kim?
Sam Kim.
Yeah, so I can reach out to Sam.
Okay. He's a good guy, too.
He's a great guy, yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else?
You said Randy's on vacation. Is he going to be attending the Orca meeting this Wednesday?
I'm not.
I'm going to say no.
And is that something that I need to pick up as an alternate?
If they have topics that they need decisions on, I would recommend, if you can fit it into your schedule, that you go. I would have to look at their agenda and see.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, add another meeting.
Let's find more meetings. I think those are virtual.
Yeah. It's hybrid, go either way. Yeah.
Good. I like it. Okay, I think, I think...
Our schedule looks pretty open.
There's nothing going on.
Yeah, there's a lot of blue there. Yeah, Orca's...
I think we'll grab Public Works and continue.
Okay.
So I've got them on, I've got them on my calendar.
Okay.
As going, so...
Okay. Feel free, have fun.
Come on up to the table.
Good morning.
Good morning. Oh, sure, yeah.
No kidding.
Yeah, we warmed our seat up for you.
All right.
All righty, well, we have two action items that we have a request for. And the first is the Flood Control Account Assistance Grant Program. And we talked about this during discussion, I think maybe a couple weeks or so ago, or longer than that now. And commissioners said, yes, go for it. So what we're asking, I apologize first of all for not having the full grant application before you, which is what we normally like to do, like here's, here's the scope, here's the budget, here's the match, all those good things. But just flat out have not had the time to do that business right now. So I did meet with Tnesa last week to talk about that and enlist her assistance on this. And I've also reached out to the Conservation District and spoken with emergency management and Kell about this, because it's really a team effort. So what I'm asking is if you could lend a little line of trust here, commissioners, in submitting the application, but also give me some sideboards about what the match limit might be. And I think we can do the match within kind services, so no cash match, because I know that that would be of concern. Yeah, and it's also something that would come out of the general fund as opposed to road fund or any other fund, because it is outside of the road right away, kind of thing. So that's why we would be limiting and wanting to make sure that it's a cash match as opposed to anything else. If something changes, like we can't meet that, we'll scope down or do accordingly, but...
If we could stick with match, I think that would be beneficial to the county budget.
Yes. Yeah. And the other thing of note, the timing on this, there would be, if we were to receive an award, it would be mid-year. And this is not in any of our department budgets or in our work plan. So if we were to receive an offer for a grant, I would expect that there'd be limited work that happens in 2025, just for that very reason.
And goes to '27.
Yeah, and the bulk of the effort would be '26 and then half of '27, so that we can plan accordingly and do it justice.
Okay.
That's exciting.
Yeah. Yes, I think so. It would be an opportunity to bring a lot of the current work and update our old, old flood plan, and then take a fresh look at our, our codes and what we allow within the Skokomish Valley in terms of development.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. And thank you for the little bit of grace and not having the, the full application before you. I appreciate that. Okay, lovejoy, how's a vacation?
Okay. Not a real vacation, but a road vacation.
A road vacation.
If only, right?
I have road vacation number four twenty, and I am presenting to you the hearing examiner's recommendation. And, and the hearing examiner is proposing that it be approved for the road vacation for the proposal from Peggy Miriam within Lakewood Platte F. Petitioner would need to pay the compensation in the amount of the nineteen thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty cents, along with it being subject to the easements as normal for the ingress egress and existing public utilities. And we are asking for approval of this. If you see fit.
So she's already paid?
All, all of the fees have been paid. The thousand dollar petition fee along with all of the compensation has already been paid.
Wow.
So the nineteen thousand eight fifteen has already been paid?
Correct.
Oh?
Yep.
So we just need to set this for a hearing?
The hearing was already done.
Oh, we already had the hearing.
It's just.
That was just, yeah.
Yeah.
Gotcha. I'm good with it.
So this will go on the agenda for the eighteenth?
Yes.
And there was a question about the hearing for the last agenda?
Sorry, I could only hear a little bit out there. Was there anything?
Or just wondering, I was, I was just wondering how many, if we have hearings coming up.
Oh, gotcha.
Soon.
For the hearing, for the road vacations, I have at least two and the next one.
Okay.
Two at once.
Okay.
So I can get them on the.
On the eighteenth.
No, for the eighteenth, for you, I just have this one, I think.
But it's not a hearing, it's a.
It's not a hearing. I think, what is it, the twenty-sixth, or February?
The.
With the hearing examiner, I have two.
Okay. But not with us.
Not with us.
Yep.
I don't want to go next. I'm not a week.
Sure you do. These are, these are things that the hearings examiner does the, the final public process and then.
I appreciate that hearing.
Oh, I know.
For your agenda, I might have two of them for that as well.
Okay.
Quite a few of them going at once, so.
Gooey, gooey.
Yes. All right, well, that is it for action, agenda item requests, commissioners. And then the next item, Richard wants to share some information. We sent a communication out to our water system customers and wanted to make sure you knew what was going out there in case there's any calls that come down to the commission office.
Right. Well, as you probably read, EPA a while ago released their lead and copper rule revisions, and they phase it in over time. They send out notices and you get, you know, here you go, here's your fair notice, please complete this task and report it by this time. We were without somebody to send that to. They, they were sending their notices to Justin Phelps still, and I'll fall on the story. That was my fault for not updating the change of him leaving. So I, that's me. So anyway, last February, they sent notice to Justin Phelps, hey, you got to do this lead service line inventory. So that was self-explanatory. We have to determine if we have any lead components on our side of the meter, meter on our side, and then there's the private side. I have to work with the homeowners to determine what their lead, or their service line is made of. Most people, we didn't get that completed by October, so that hence the notifications that'll go out. There's two of them, there's a tier two and a tier three. At tier two, you seem kind of redundant, but the tier two is you didn't complete it in time. The tier three is not only didn't you complete it, but you didn't report to us that you didn't complete it. So that's, that's where we're at with that. We have, did our whole, all of our water systems, our side, PVC, non-metal, we're good. The only thing of concern is anything built out of after nineteen eighty-six.
Before.
Yeah, before, before nineteen eighty-six. That's the only part we have a question about, so we're sending this out as part of it, too. It shows them where they're in, Eric, I know you're watching, this, we stole this from the City of Shelton. We use their excellent examples, I'd rather say. And then we're also going to follow their lead basically on how they present this information and make it available to the public at all times, because it'll be a living document trying to get all of this thing, everybody's service lines identified. It'll take some time, you know, we got about six, seven hundred of them. And so they did a great job with their GIS department that shows, you could zoom in on a map and you can look, go right at your address and see what side the municipal side is and what, if we figured out yours or not. And so that's how we plan to make it public as well.
Okay.
So they all this went out in the billing with their normal bills, with instructions on how they can do this. There'll be a link to a, a coming survey that they'll have access to, so they can fill that out if, hey, if your house was built in nineteen eighty-six or after, we're good. I know what to put on there. Before, we'll ask them to, here's different methods that you could, if you want to, if you would, please identify your own service line. So we'll, we're doing what we can.
So if it's on the private side?
Mm-hmm. All we can do is make them aware.
Okay.
I can't make them do anything.
That was going to be my question.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's.
But yeah, at least they'll be aware that they have a lead service line, and then they know if they want, yeah, be intelligent about fixing it or not.
Okay.
Yeah, and the meters, I was asking, Richard, can we tell that from the meter itself? And he said, no, the way the meter's configured, you can't see the pipe coming out.
Yeah, it's an underground service line and it comes up to a meter, and this goes back down to a service line, so it's buried.
Yeah.
So this will be.
All the things he wished he knew. If we, if we knew this was coming, right, then when they set the meters, they could have identified.
All of them, easily.
Everything, right, the gate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah, those were put in before the rule was released.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, and it's hard to track all the changes that comes from all these government entities.
You know, they, they, they provide you with everything, though, really. I mean, they did, the Department of Health did a great job with EPA on putting this out there and, and explaining to you, giving you guidance for every step and, and options on how you can make it public. Like I said, I think the City of Shelton did it. It was, that's the best thing I've ever seen as far as reporting something like that on and making it available to the public, yeah.
Good job, Mayor.
And hats off to Richard. As soon as he was aware of this, everything else was put on the back burner, and this was his number one priority to get addressed right out.
I got notification, January tenth. So it was, yeah, got to get this done. That's all I got. Unless you have any questions.
Glad you're getting notified now.
Well, yeah, now to go back through and update all the water facility inventory reports and all that, that's, don't believe me, I've been really close with them lately.
Yeah.
And then, and then last week was Ralph, and here's some water things that we need to talk about also, so bringing Ralph up to speed on water responsibilities as well.
Good.
Yeah, for sure. Okay.
That's it.
Anything else?
No, just the, congrats to the crew doing great snow work, although we got, it was kind of easy this time. It wasn't non-stop snow, so you got a break.
Wasn't snow again?
No, it was not, but nonetheless, early starts for folks and late days sometimes, and that's all part of the gig.
And we're not done with the snow yet.
Nope, we are not. But definitely proud of their, their work and their efforts.
They did a great job.
Yep.
And no snow and cold disasters on the utility front, so.
Nothing freezing, no pipes breaking, we're good.
Exactly.
So far.
Nothing freezing.
Nothing freezing.
Low twenties, so.
Yeah.
No, heater's working, it's, it's nice up there right now.
Good.
Yeah.
Very good. All right.
Thank you very much.
Yep. One of the things I forgot to mention in my administrator updates is that if you got onto the Mason County website this morning, you would see a new face, so super excited about that, really appreciative of Ben and TJ really going through the details of all of our pages, because the conversion came over and then they went and cleaned it up, and then they sent it out to all the departments and offices and said, hey, you've got a couple of weeks to take a look at this, and if you need to make some changes, make them. And so today it went live, so definitely interested in any feedback that people have, and if the public wants to go check it out, I'm glad that, that I see external people that were able to find the link to come to this meeting, so that's a good sign.
Yeah.
But yeah, yeah, it's, it's nice. I think it should work that way.
Yes. Yeah. Let's see. Oh, yes, that's pretty. I like that. Yeah.
Yeah, and I know that we'll still have some cleanup and things to make it easier for our department to find, and so yes, definitely echo what Mark has to say. If folks have suggestions, please send them our way.
Yeah. Yeah, it gives us a lot more flexibility, this application does, so I think that we can really distribute the model out to the departments and offices to keep their sites updated, which is really nice, and excited to get some of that training going and, and yeah, it's, it's a better, better platform to be on.
Yeah, Alex Creek.
Yeah, very intuitive. I think that was the goal, is that we wanted it to be intuitive, so when you got on, if you were looking for something specific, you could actually navigate to it without having to click on all the different links.
Four different.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is awesome. Yeah, TJ stopped by this morning and said that, because I've been live, I just had, no, I had the opportunity, so.
The other.
Great job, I'd like to hear from people.
The other update that I want to give accolades to both Kelly and, and TJ, they were in early Saturday morning to fix the transfer switch when our power goes out, our generator starts and transferring power from the source to the generator did not work very well the last time the power went out, so they got to go change that this weekend, and we did it on the weekend so it wouldn't impact staff, but.
Fine, thank you.
The vendor came in and actually did it live. So that was, when we shut down the system, it would impact NACOM, and so they, the vendor, when he came, he realized that, and so we were able to call the P U D off and say we don't need to cut power, and our vendor actually replaced and fixed it with live power, which they said was pretty, he had a pretty cool suit on to go and do that work, but, but definitely appreciate Kelly and TJ, they're always coming in on off hours to.
They are.
Fix things that break, or if we have blips or cameras aren't working, or we have frozen pipes, Kelly and his team and TJ come in all the time, so very appreciated.
Yeah, very much. Yeah, they're great. They're, they're awesome. All right, so I only have one thing for Commissioner's presentation. So tomorrow, Tuesday night, and thank you, Eric, for calling me and giving me a reminder, the city council's hosting, and then also Ben sent out a, this reminder also, yeah, Ben. It is a presentation titled Drug Awareness Project, formerly called Gas Station Heroin, led by John Holbrook. So I would encourage everyone to attend this meeting. I think it's a virtual and, virtual and in person, right? Right, Eric?
Yes, it'll be in person, or you can watch it on Mason Web TV or on the City of Shelton YouTube site. Do you want me to kind of explain it a little bit, or you got to get with what you heard?
Um, yeah, go ahead and explain it real quick, because you did a good, a good job explaining it to me again yesterday.
Yeah, there's a little misconception that it might, this is about drugs, this is not about street drugs, it's not about fentanyl, it's not about heroin, this is about legal or unregulated supplements that are not regulated by the government nor the state of Washington. We all know kratom is, is a big name, but there are much, much more than kratom that are out there. These drugs are bought in gas stations, they're not, there's no age restriction, they can get you high, they can get you addicted, in some instances, they could probably kill you. John Holbrook is the Safety and Security Director of Rent School Districts, he's local, he used to work for Shelton School Districts, and he does a great job on this presentation. It's more information for electeds to know what's out there, and also for parents to know if you find this in your kid's drawer, you've got a problem. So basically, it's, I've been trying to get it on our agenda for months, I saw it through the, the Mason County Housing, I'm sorry, Housing, Mason County Coalition for Substantive Abuse with Ben Johnson, and it's just a great presentation, and John does a great job, and it's an eye-opener. You're going to be shocked, absolutely shocked if you watch this, so. But yeah, I'd love to see you guys tomorrow night on Zoom, or, or hopefully you watch it or show up, it's, it's, it's a big eye-opener.
And what time, what time is it, Eric?
It's o'clock. It's our only agenda item, so it should be the first thing that happens after roll call, and as long as it lasts, probably usually twenty, twenty-five minutes, maybe.
Great.
Well, it's, you know, these are things that we could outlaw locally, but unfortunately, if we combine Olympia, it's not going to help us, so I've sent this presentation to our thirty-fifth as well, to all three of them, and all three have promised that they would look into this also. Kratom is actually up, or some, is being looked at right now by Department of Health. There was a big meeting the other day, a listening session, but I really, I couldn't figure out how to get on it, so I missed it, so hopefully I'm able to find some information on what happened in that meeting. There was some, like a two-month comment period where you could send your comments in and they're ever going to discuss it, but I couldn't figure it out on their website, so. But, but that's just one, one thing right now that's, that's out there. There's about eight states that do regulate most of this stuff, so thanks for letting me tell you about it.
Yeah, no, it should be good.
Eric, what is kratom? Because I don't know anything about that.
It's an herbal supplement, basically that gets you high, and, and if you talk to some of the councils in town, if you're addicted to kratom, there's actually no services for you because it's not a regulated drug, so. It's, you can see it, you can buy it all over town, there's signs all over town, kratom, kratom, kratom.
See them all over the place.
Huh?
See the signs all over the place.
Yep, and yeah, it's, I guess it's pretty nasty stuff, so you're going to hear a lot about it tomorrow, and yeah, John does a great job explaining it, too, and hopefully he'll take questions, at least from the, the council and, you know. But yeah, I'd encourage you to, you know, to watch it and also talk to Ben Johnson, he, he's been really involved in this as well. You're Ben Johnson.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, that's great, yeah, he sent out a reminder.
Last week.
Last week on, yeah, on the tenth, one Friday.
All right. Well, I appreciate it, thank you, guys.
Today's.
See you at three o'clock, Sharon?
I'll see you at three o'clock.
All right.
All right, are we, where are we meeting? Is it?
Actually, no, I don't have any idea, let me see if I, I'll have to call Mark and give you, I'll send you a text.
Okay, sounds good.
Come on.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay, goodbye.
All right, see you at three. All right, anything else?
Uh, no. Six o'clock tomorrow, Eric.
Yeah. Yeah, should be good. All right.
So I'll probably be there in person, but.
Yeah, me too.
So I'll just sit on the other side, sides of the room or something.
No, you, we can attend things, you just don't.
Don't discuss county business and you're all good.
Yep.
Yep.
We still say hi. All right, anything else?
None for me.
Richard. Would you like to adjourn?
Oh. To his office, Sharon.
Mark's office, okay, thanks.
You got to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.